The depression is here now. The problems within Los Angeles and all other smaller cities that have continued to find this problem of recession and depression getting worse and worse and worse. Public of Los Angeles, you see in the markets, you feel the crunch of what's going on with this recession? Because some claim there is no recession, and how will it affect our schools? It'll stop production. We need schools that support not just our children at entry-level jobs to support the growing economy or the industry. No, we need our children to go to college. We want our children to go to college.
District One Councilmember Ed Reyes asking for an "I" vote explains the possibilities available when a high school diploma is obtained from HE LAB.
Again, I want to thank the school district for this partnership. This is one of the final pieces of the Taylor Yard corridor will be built, a 4-acre park, an industrial park that creates businesses. This allows us to put together an educational institution that allows us to connect ecological, hydrological, as well as educational opportunities that future generations will benefit. So, again, this resolution allows us to begin pulling together all these pieces so we can start a trend in how we can take advantage of the master plan and actually be predictable on our land use patterns while developing these partnerships that will connect and benefit all communities throughout the corridor. But precisely, the neighborhoods around Cypress Park, Glatzel Park, Echo Park, Illusion Valley, Lincoln Heights, these are communities that will benefit because of this creativity and focus on future jobs, business development, and believe me, if you get your high school diploma here, it doesn't mean you cannot go to college. It means you'll be better prepared to go into other businesses, other trades, other jobs, and be skilled in a whole range of opportunities.
Thanking the school board, District Four Councilmember Tom Labonge says the state-of-the-art hydrology and energy laboratory will help with overcrowding at other schools in the area.
This high school will certainly help out a overcrowded Franklin High School, Eagle Rock High School, and John Marshall High School, and maybe a little bit of Lincoln High School in there, and also connect to the industrial corridor of a very important transformation that is taking place in that area. I want to thank Mr. Calhoun for his leadership in the school board's efforts to cite schools and to get them built for the students. I ask for an "I" vote, and thank you again, Mr. Calhoun.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. That matter, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Matter passes. Item 32 on Wednesday was a resolution to support state legislation that would require the Public Utilities Commission to adopt customer service standards for cable service providers. District Six Councilmember Tony Cardenas calls staff to come forward, so there might be some clarification of the new world of cable and communications.
This was a resolution to support AB 1647, Assemblyman De La Torre bill, but that bill has now, seems to be dead. But don't ever forget, at any moment in time, the legislature can resurrect a matter, get it through both houses and the governor in one day. So, it's dead for now, but more importantly, let's talk about the spirit of what that legislation would do, and can one of you give us a brief overview of what the nature of the new world of cable communication is in the state of California and what the previous legislation did, the Levine-Nunez bill did, here in the state of California?
Good afternoon, Councilman Mark Wolf with ITA. The Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act that took effect January 1, 2007, established the California Public Utility Commission as the sole franchising authority for television in the state of California for all new video service providers, as well as permitting the incumbent operators to opt into the state franchising scheme.
Now, that sounds like gobbledygook to somebody who doesn't follow this. So, where did people have to go to get a franchise before, and where do they go to get a franchise now? And a franchise, is that like a McDonald's or something? What's a franchise?
Prior to January 7th, January 2007, the city was the franchising authority for any operators that wanted to come into the city and provide cable service to subscribers.
So, if somebody wanted to provide cable service in Bakersfield, they would go to the city of Bakersfield, and perhaps their system was that eventually the city council would, in Bakersfield, would approve it or not. Here in Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles would deal with it policy-wise, and then the city council would approve that new franchise or that new geographic area or not, correct?
That is correct, Councilman.
That was before. Now, where do people get their franchise permit?
So, now, as of January 1, 2007, the state now, under the California Public Utilities Commission, is now the franchising authority statewide for any type of video service or cable service providing.
So, my second question is, if somebody had a complaint before, in the old system, before January 1, 2007, who should the person or would the person come to, and who is responsible for hearing those complaints about their cable company? And then now, who should the public go to to lodge their complaints about their cable company?
Councilman, the city prior to the state law, the city was the sole franchising authority and would be the entity that any subscribers would go to with any customer complaints. And the city had actually adopted its own local franchise, or excuse me, local customer service standards, which were very strong compared nationwide to other municipalities. As a result of the new state law, now the city continues to be responsible to enforce and resolve cable TV complaints, but it's no longer, we're no longer able to enforce our local cable, our local customer service standards. We now have to go with the state and federal standards.
But wait a minute, if somebody comes to the city of Los Angeles and they lodge a complaint against ABC Cable Company, what can the city of Los Angeles do to tell that cable company, hey, service your people right, take care of your customers? What can we do? And if we can or can't do much about it, who is supposed to be the authority now that has the ability to get the cable company's attention, to make them take care of their customers?
I'll let the city attorney's office describe in detail the process, but ITA has continued to take escalated complaints from subscribers, and in a sense, we're filling the niche of being the ombudsman between the providers and the subscribers to resolve With, citizens today can call 311 to provide us with information on escalated complaints, and we work on a daily basis with the providers to try and resolve those issues.
An assistant city attorney explains further the city's authority in enforcing customer service standards for the cable television industry.
The city's been put in a tough position because we enforce state and federal consumer service standards, but we're not the franchising authority anymore. So, all we can do under the new law, in other words, we can't pass our own standards, our standards were more stringent and somewhat more effective, in our opinion, than the state and federal standards. So, all we can do is pass some very modest fines after ITA repeatedly warns and gives notice to the video providers. Modest fines, starting out at $500, and the maximum possible fine for repeated violations is $7,500. So, and even the imposition of those fines can't be used to revoke their service ability, revoke their franchise, so we have a lot less authority now.
So, under the old system, if somebody was providing cable service for their customers, and they were just terrible at it, could the city of Los Angeles, under the old system, yank their ability to have a license to do business in the city of Los Angeles?
Ultimately, yes, we could have.
So, that's kind of like ultimately the deterrent for people to treat their customers better if they got a lot of complaints, and the city of Los Angeles was demanding that they do a better job. The backdrop of that is they would lose their ability to do business in the city, correct?
That's correct. One would assume they would be more responsive.
And today, can we do that to the service provider, as in the cable company or the telephone company, who's providing that service, that video service? Can we yank their license?
No, we cannot.
We can't do that anymore. The city of Los Angeles could do it in the past, but we can't do that anymore.
That's correct, Councilman.
Who has the responsibility of doing that now, if it ever comes to the point where they're so bad that they can get their license yanked?
Be the California Public Utilities Commission.
The California Public Utilities Commission, they have an office here in City Hall?
I don't believe so.
No, the answer to that is no, absolutely not. The PUC does not have an office here in City Hall. Do they have an office over at the county supervisor's office down the street? The answer's no, they don't. Where is their office? Where do they reside in order to deal with this issue?
San Francisco, sir.
What's that?
San Francisco.
San Francisco, not New York City, not Los Angeles, San Francisco. So, our constituents basically have to get the ear of this body in San Francisco in order for them to do something about what's going on in their neighborhood in Los Angeles, correct?
Ultimately.
Okay. The reason why I wanted to have this dialogue with you, ladies and gentlemen, is because the city of Los Angeles, along with every city in the state of California, unfortunately is in the position of not being able to help their constituents and make sure that they're getting the service that they are paying for and the service that they deserve. In my opinion, we had a much better system before, not perfect, but much better than it is today, as far as providing service to the customer, which is our constituent. And that's why I think it's important, even though AB 1647, the De La Torre bill, is now dead until it may or may not get resurrected, I think the city of Los Angeles needs to pay heed to the fact that we do need good legislation to happen in Sacramento to clarify this and to help the customers of California, to help the customers of Los Angeles, and that we have a good team of people who are ready and willing to watch that and help make sure that there's good legislation. But it's up to Sacramento, a legislator has to take up the mantle, a senator or an assembly member, in order to correct the things that are, in my opinion, askew here in California and that is hindering our ability to make sure that our constituents, the customers, are actually getting the service that they deserve. So, thank you very much for all of your hard work, and hopefully we'll have a bill to follow and put a resolution of support to in the future.
Stating his belief that public access is the electronic soapbox of the 21st century, District 11 Councilmember Bill Rosendahl says we need new legislation in Sacramento with more teeth in it.
You know, I started in this town in 1981 as a cable guy, and I worked on franchising, where we went before every city to get our customer service standards, our public access. The whole thing was usurped by the state. It was one of these quick deals, and so the phone companies could jump into the cable business and not have to go through the process of franchising in the cities. It would take a lot of time, but they did not put in the perfect mechanism for customer complaints that they should do. And frankly, they destroyed public access. 1% is a nickel compared to the monies that I used to spend on staff and the public access studios, because I truly believe it's the electronic soapbox in the 21st century. So, be it as it may, we do need legislation in Sacramento with more teeth in it, so when a customer gets a fuzzy picture or they have some other problems with their cable, they know how to deal with it. The legislation is essential going forward. Before you know it, you know, the state will be co-opted by the feds, and then there'll be a federal blanket policy, which is the direction the multimedia agencies are going in. So, thank you, Tony, for bringing the issue to the public's attention, and viewers out...
L.A. City View Channel 35, your city, your channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2008. Today is Election Day, and we encourage everybody who has not yet made it to the polls to go to their polls, which will be open until 8:00 PM this evening. There are local and statewide issues on the ballot today. Again, this is Election Day, and please make your way to the polls. If you have any questions about where to vote, you can always call 311, and they should be able to connect you with the County Registrar Recorder, who is running today's elections. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM here. We will not be meeting this Friday, though. The meeting is canceled for the swearing-in of our new Speaker from Los Angeles, the Speaker of the State Assembly, Karen Bass. So we will not be meeting on Friday. We will be meeting next Tuesday in Van Nuys City Hall. To remind everybody, that's June 10th. We will be out in Van Nuys to continue our meetings out in the San Fernando Valley and our attempts to bring City Council closest to all Angelinos wherever they live. I'm Council President Eric Garcetti, and I am joined today by my council members Tony Cardenas, Councilwoman Wendy Gruel, Councilmember Janice Hahn, Councilmember Tom Labonge, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, Greg Smith, Herb Wesson, and Dennis Zine. That means we have a quorum, so Mr. Clerk, if you will please call the roll, we'll begin our business.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weasel, Labonge, Parksberry, Reyes, Roswell, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum. Ms. President?
All right, first order of business, please.
Approval in a minute.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Alakon seconds, without objection. Those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Ms. Hahn moves, and Ms. Gruel seconds, without objection. Those two will be approved. Next order of business, please.
Ms. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Commissioner Tolentino, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance from the podium over there? If I can ask everybody, please rise for our traditional salute to the flag.
You put your right hand to your heart and say, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I know I surprised you with that, but we appreciate your leading us. Next order of business, please, if we can run through the agenda.
On Item 1, there is no action required in as much as nothing has been received from the Mayor's Office.
Okay. Next item, please.
Item 2 is an ordinance notice for public hearing, and council should have 12 members. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold that on the desk.
Items 3 through 7 are street lighting district items notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on June 24th. There is a card on Item 3.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards from the public. The others, without objection. We'll open those and continue them till the 24th of June. Next item, please.
Items 8 through 14 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Colleagues, 8 through 14, any specials on 8 through 14? Yes, Mr. Weiss.
I'm supposed to call Item 14 special.
14 for Mr. Weiss.
Do we have an amending motion or something?
I believe there's an amending motion coming, but...
Do we need special for that, or...
Yeah, why don't we hold it on the desk until we get that circulated? Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Any other specials, 8 through 13, colleagues, 8 through 13? If not, let's go ahead on the balance. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
As approved, if we can go back to Number 2 now that we have 12 members. And let's go ahead and open the roll on Item Number 2. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 15 through 25 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. Item 15 is a commission reappointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please. Let's hold the commission reappointment on the desk. Do we have any cards on these items?
Yes, Ms. President, there are cards on 21, 24, and 25.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open and close the public hearings on the other items. Any specials, colleagues? That's Item 16 through 23. 16 through 23. Seeing no specials, let's take up the balance, please. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, Items 26 through 31 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. And we have cards on some of those?
Yes, there are cards on 26, 27, and 31.
Okay. Call those special for cards from the public. Again, anybody who would like to be heard on any items, there are cards in the back. If you just fill those out with your name and hand them to the sergeants-at-arms, we'll make sure to hear your comments. Any other specials, colleagues? That's 28 through 30 left. Nobody wishes to call those special? We'll go ahead and open the roll on 28, 29, and 30. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Yes, 28 and 30. 28 and 30, forthwith, without objection. Okay. If we can go now back to public comment. This is now time for general public comment, which is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of the city. Like to invite our friend Sky Anderson forward first, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys for Donna Perman, who will be our second speaker. Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to come forward. Very good morning.
I'm Sky Anderson. I've been a resident of Los Angeles for eight and a half years. I don't come up here and criticize every time I get up here. I think some very good council people have transformed Hollywood, and Mr. Labonge and Mr. Garcetti. When I came here eight years ago, Hollywood was a dump, now a thriving, beautiful city because of the council people's leadership. I'm gonna talk about Bernard Parks and his running for county supervisor. There's a saying in the Bible that's "By the works they shall be done." I get very little on Social Security and live in a Skid Row hotel. When Mr. Parks was the police chief, we had drug dealers all over Skid Row. They operated openly, dealing in heroin and cocaine, killing lives with this, and Mr. Parks did nothing. We had gangs operating openly and growing and growing and growing, and Mr. Parks did nothing. And this is a... You want to see what a person like, put them in power and see what happens to them. But here's an article in the Sentinel on the front page about Mr. Parks getting magical help from Magic Johnson, endorsement from Yvonne Burke. The back page, a full-page advertisement for Mr. Parks, and inside is an article about some former aide that Mr. Parks, when he was a police chief, had been investigated by the police chief for grand theft. This is nothing but propaganda put in the form of media. The LA Times endorses Mr. Parks. The reason the people don't... The media doesn't criticize Mr. Parks because the people like Mr. Parks, and they don't want to lose the readership and the viewers of people who may be antagonized by people criticizing Mr. Parks. I'm seriously concerned about Mr. Parks being on the Board of Supervisors. There's no public comment, and he may do the damage he did when he was the head of Skid Row Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Donna Perman is our next speaker out in Van Nuys.
Hello, hello, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, I'm against our one-term mayor, Councilman Weiss and Zine going to Israel, though according to Daily News, Councilman Zine wrote to say he was paying his own expenses out of his own pocket except for airfare. I wonder at that. I hope... Wish somebody would pay my airfare to Israel and my friend Miriam, until Jews have the right to return. I hope Councilman Weiss is doing the same, anyway. I hope this is true. Los Angeles can't afford to send our one-term mayor and councilman on a vacation mixed with city business. What I really don't like is the timing. Our horrible mayor is socking us with this huge cutback to LAUSD. It's going to affect the jobs of thousands of clerical, administrative, and temporary teachers. There's going to be temporary strike on June 6th. The clerical is a nuts and bolts of any organization. Just because most teachers are not directly affected affects the whole LAUSD. That's why I need to break it up. It would be harder to go against several entities. It's all with more people, more children. We need more buildings and schools. We now have less. Please don't expect the disabled to take the transit. It's too hard. They have to stand up waiting for the buses and on the bus, and the seats are too small. And so, and good luck to get a seat when you get it. And Wilshire Boulevard is terrible. It's all rocky. Anyway, I also want to repeat it's a bad decision to cut back on our libraries. A lot of people, a lot of kids rely on libraries and computers, where some of the library is the only source of computer for homework assignments. Believe me, it's used. Of course, we have our wonderful books. I love to take out classical children's books. It broadens my knowledge. Anyway, I... We need... It will cost... It's good... We need to go against... Slim down our CRA. It's too much power. You're selling buildings to them at rock-bottom prices and don't develop our newest Grand Avenue projects, our old No Hope and Hollywood projects that benefits the rich, benefits developers in the CRA. We have to put a stop to it. They're stealing our money, putting it in a hole with only a small portion of affordable housing just to get it funded. CRA... Mr. Garcetti, CRA is not Santa Claus. And by the way, why doesn't the Valley get money for this gang initiative? Bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is going to be Zuma Dogg here in Council Chambers, and then after that is going to be Matt Dowd. Good morning, Mr. Dogg.
Yes, good morning. First of all, a reminder for everybody in Van Nuys, although three out of four of the last five meetings, it will be now, there's no Van Nuys meeting this Friday. Also, I'm very upset today. I've been coming here for two years. I've spoken about... Came in here over the... Yeah, excuse me, please. I came in here over the Venice Beach issue on April 4th, 2006, okay? And over the past two years, I've been embracing the community, I mean, immersed in the community. I've spoken about a lot of issues. LAUSD, I don't have kids. Tenants' rights, I'm homeless, I don't live in a house. Things in East LA. I've never been there until I started to talk to the people in the community, all right? So now I gotta talk about myself. I'm pissed off as hell, and I don't want to see any smiling from Councilmember Bill Rosendahl on this one, damn it.
If you could please be respectful, Mr. Dogg.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so yeah, let me tell you something, man. I'm out of my mind today because I went to Venice Beach after two years of coming here. We finally overturned the ordinance after two years of me coming here. We finally got satisfaction, and you made the changes that allowed me to return to the beach. So I did that this Saturday, and you have got to be kidding me. I was there, ready to perform, waiting to perform in a spot. There was a piano player next to me. Well, of course, I'm not going to perform loud when there's a piano player. It's cooperation amongst the performers down there. So Rob from Parks and Rec, and this all comes down on Rob from Parks and Rec, comes over with LAPD and tells me I have to move because he's got a knife juggler. There's a guy that stands on a ladder and juggles machetes, and they said he has to go. And I said, "Well, I was here, and if you want a performer, I'm just being polite, but if I have to start, I'll start." They go, "You have to wait an hour after Machete Boy." I don't understand that at all. I understand, Mark Brown, that there's a rotating policy of performers, and I like that. But if I was in the space first, so I got kicked out, I didn't get to make my money, I ran out of gas, I couldn't come back, I'm hungry as hell. You'd better buy some Zuma Dogg shirts out of that community money.
Thank you, Mr. Dogg, for your comments today. Our next speaker is Matt Dowd. Now, just a reminder, all speakers, if you could please make sure not to have loud-threatening personal or abusive language. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's great to be back. Channel 35, it's Matt Dowd. I'll verify. I've actually put up a video on YouTube. You just look up "Deep South 81." You'll see the testimony from the public of the machete juggler who actually purposefully let go of these machetes, and they hit my equipment. But guess what? Janice Hahn asked the question of the city attorney, "Is there a space for Michael Hunt?" And the city attorney said, "No, Shea Butt is not protected by the First Amendment. We're still litigating." But guess what? The city's given Michael Hunt a permit. The city's given Michael Hunt an inextricably intertwined I-zone space today in the lottery. So either the city's litigating us or they're not. But guess what? I've got my attorney, Bill, here from Century Park East, Steve Rhodey. Last month, it was $97,000. This month, it's up to $114,000. So on one hand, the city is just throwing money down the drain, but on the other hand, they're giving Michael Hunt the permit, and they're giving him the I-space. So what are you doing? That's dumb, Mr. City Attorney. The attorneys are dumb. Mike Nagel is dumb as a brick. Because on one hand, the city's giving Mike Hunt a permit and a space in the I-zone, but they're telling the Honorable Councilwoman Hahn that he's not valid. So what are you doing? So anyway, I went into the I-zone lottery because the judge said Matt Dowd's inextricably intertwined. And guess what? You're letting all these people in the I-lottery who are not intertwined, so I've got another lawsuit. Bill Rosendahl, you hearing this? I'm going to address Bill Rosendahl because he's talking to the council president. I'll make Eric Garcetti...
If you could please, you know you're supposed to address the... That's our first warning. You're supposed to address the councils as a whole. Thank you. That ends our comments here. Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys will be our next commenter. After that, we'll come back here for Lucille Saunders. Morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Yes, good morning. Good morning. This is about the anti-gang fund that was put up last week. I can't remember which day. And I was reading here, the whole thing is $2.7 million that we're going to do in the mayor and the council. But I didn't see anything from the Valley. Where does the Valley get completely shortchanged from all this gang when you turn around and have an ordinance going against the gang, what's it, Fed? FED up there in Silmar? And over here in the North Hills, you got the gangs over here where they call it the witch's hat, and they have nothing but trouble there. And all of a sudden, the Valley don't get a dime for this thing? I mean, I just don't understand this. Well, the Valley got it again, I guess you could say. Like, the council could care less about the Valley. We never get anything, anyway, between the roads and so forth. But even like, for instance, like the illegals coming around here. We're a swamp. This place is just so bad with everybody just roaming around on the streets and so forth, that what are we going to do about this? I says, "You people have a law. We have laws and so forth, and you people just don't want to enforce them." I don't understand this. It's so far overcrowded, the streets are overcrowded, everybody's screaming about gas and so forth and that stuff. I feel sorry for them, but you people, we voted you to pass the laws. You... We have laws, and you don't want to accept the laws. I don't understand this. Why do I have to obey the laws, then? I don't understand why I should, then. If you people don't obey them, why should I have to obey them? I mean, you only put out what you want to do, and then you have this Order 40 that ties the police hands, where you mention anything to them, "I'm sorry, we can't do anything about it. Our lecherous council and the police chief says, 'We don't want to get involved. We can't ask any of those questions.'" You get in accidents, people don't have driver's license. Who's supposed to pay for it? Well, you've got to pay for it out of your insurance company. I don't understand this either. It's just not fair. And you people need to get on the stick and do what the people want you to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. Lucille Saunders is our last speaker from the Melrose Neighborhood Association. Very good morning.
Good morning. The Melrose Neighborhood Association would like to commend and congratulate our council member, Tom Labonge, and members of his staff, who represent part of our community, for their diligent work with the community and developers to mutually revise and act as beneficial to all interests. The Wilshire La Brea project, which was downsized from an original 18-story mixed-use project that is now more appropriate in size, scale, and character with our community. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. We vote.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments, and we appreciate you all coming in.
The last name, Renee Whitefield.
And Renee, and Carol, and Stacy, and all of your staff.
Team Labonge, congratulations to all of them. Good work. With that, we'll... That'll close our general public comment. If we can go to the items called special, please.
Yes, Ms. President. Item 15 is the reappointment of Mr. Tolentino to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Okay. We can have Mr. Tolentino come forward to the table, and I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Mr. Weiss. Congratulations on your renomination.
Thank you. Anyway, I think last week was a very good week for the department and particularly for the commission, when the Controller released her update in terms of sort of a status report, sort of audit. It shows that you all have been making tremendous progress, not just on the public safety side but on the human resources side. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your goals for your next term?
Well, I think we want to just keep continuing and implementing these audit goals and still looking at the... What our progress is, and also looking to make sure that we are on a timeline accordingly, and so that we don't have to wait for such a long period of time to make things realized, I suppose.
Well, colleagues, we've got a great fire commission, Mr. Labonge being first among equals as our fan of the fire commission and the fire department, no question about it. And I would urge an a vote.
Thank you. We have some other council members, Ms. Gruel, and then Mr. Labonge.
Thank you. I too want to stand in the support of Kaz, and we spent Saturday together out in the San Fernando Valley. He has been a leader on this commission, not only on policy issues, but he also has been a... Had a visible presence, which I think is really important, and out at the fire stations. And so, I just wanted to stand and say I support your renomination. A good report last week from the City Controller's Office on the kinds of things that are happening with the chief and the commission, and look forward to you keeping us in the loop in this next year because we have to be forever diligent to ensure that we are providing the services to our communities and our constituencies, and also ensuring that we have the training and the guidance to our firefighters as well. So, just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve and support you wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Labonge.
Commissioner, thank you for your service, and thank you for the great effort all have done in the transition of the fire department. Your work throughout the city on issues there. I know we had a big fire just Sunday. No one was injured, above a minor injury. Fatal injuries, this at the Universal Studio Fires, but we also will be looking at the water issue. Your Fire Prevention Bureau is very important. Earthquake preparedness is very important. Disaster preparedness is very important. All these issues here. And I just wanted to thank you for your service to the Los Angeles City Fire Department and express that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, the members wish to be heard. Let's go ahead and make it official. Please open... Oh, we do... I'm sorry. We had a card that was given to us. After that had been called special, Mr. Matt Dowd on Item Number 15.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to take a minute to address the Commissioner. Just on behalf of the rank and file, the fire department, it's been a lot of problems in the fire department, and it stemmed from bad leadership, and you're in a position to have some control over that. And the main thing is to keep the rank and file happy, because they're the ones going to be out there fighting the fires and saving lives, protecting the community. So I just want to take this time to say that on their behalf, because you're going to be the Commissioner, one of the Commissioners, and it's important to keep the fire department happy, and I want to just stand up for the rank and file. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That will close our public comment. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Casimiro Urbano Tolentino. You don't need to answer the question, but I was just curious as to which box you check off. Could be a lot of things, but I noticed that on your resume here, you've been involved very much with the Filipino community. And just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for being one of the pioneers over at UCLA and beyond, and working on organizations that have really brought that community forward and to have a better voice. Speaking of that, how do you feel about the progress that the department is or is not making when it comes to the hazing issue and also the diversity, the issue of diversity amongst its members?
Well, I think we're progressing. I'm head of the Personnel Committee of the Fire Commission, and I know that we met for over six months, twice a week, to address those particular issues. Changing the culture of the department is going to take some time to develop. But the... It's going to take some time. And I think we're implementing it. I think we're probably not as rapid as I think I would want it to be, but working in government and knowing how government works, I think we're at least expediting a few of these areas much faster than I thought we could do.
Well, my main question to you is, do you feel that you're making progress?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, is it being made clear to the members of the department that the same budget that we all... All departments vie for, is the same budget that when something goes awry, or we have a lawsuit or something like that, that it comes out of the same pot of funds, which means next year and the following year, there's less money for us to dedicate to equipment and personnel, et cetera? Is that point being made clear?
Well, I think that both the fire chief, several of the Commissioners have been visiting different fire stations, communicating that concern, communicating the need to change the culture, communicating the need to strengthen the department, promote public safety, promote life, and also to promote a, essentially, a professional working associate... Professional working environment. I think every time, at least I've gone to a fire station, I've asked, you know, "What do you think of the leadership? What do you think of our role within the city?" And I try to answer some of those to them and also try to get feedback from them. I think that, looking at the report, it's partially implemented. I think down the line, you'll find that it'll be much more fully implemented and meet all the needs of the city.
Okay. Well, I appreciate all the work that you're doing on that front, and I'm sure that's not the only thing that you're working on, but it's my understanding that you're very involved in that issue. Well, I want to thank you for that. Also, I just want to ask you, do you read... Does the name Soriano ring a bell to you?
Yes. It's Esther Soriano. She was an old friend from UCLA and had recently passed away about a month ago.
And she was very involved in many organizations when it comes to diversity issues, Filipino issues, and really pioneering organizations like you've been involved in, correct?
Yes. Even though she was only just a few years older, I don't want to... She actually was kind of... We looked to her as the mother figure for a lot of us who are organizing in the Filipino community.
Well, speaking of mothers, I'm very proud to have her son Eduardo on my staff here, and he knows you as well, and he respects you very much. So he was giving me a lot of color commentary on where you've been and what you've been up to. So I just want to say thank you so much. You have a tremendous amount of diversity to offer this city, and you have a tremendous amount of experience, and we appreciate you volunteering for the city of Los Angeles. And to me, it's priceless to have people like you volunteering their time. Your time is very valuable, and I want to say on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, we appreciate you and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Ms. President. Commissioner, the issues that have been brought to the attention of this council, the hazing within the fire department has been mentioned. How often do the Commissioners visit fire stations and discuss it with the rank and file?
I think the first couple of years we first were appointed, I know that then-President Delila had visited almost every fire station. I know Chief Berry has too. All of us as Commissioners have been dropping by fire stations, talking about those issues. At that point in time, it was really what the audit was talking about and how they would address it themselves. We're trying to get feedback from the rank and file. And with time, as you know, we, at least for me, I was a brand new fire commissioner and I was trying to learn as much as I can, both from management and also from the rank and file, about how the fire department works.
So is it a continuing process where Commissioners visit the stations, the facilities, and keep in touch with the rank and file? Because that seems to be the problem where we've had these lawsuits filed from the rank and file in the stations, not the command staff, but the workers.
I think, speaking for myself, but I think also for the other Commissioners, I think we're much more engaged with the department, with the rank and file than way before the other Commissioner.
And the comments you received, does it show that things are improving?
I see at least much of the rank and file actually kind of educating each other as to this change in culture and this change in approach to becoming a professional firefighting group. Just a quick story, I remember when someone mentioned about how all these events are taking the fun out of some of their activities. And before I could even address it, another firefighter said, what do you mean the fun out? Does it fun to do? And he cited various hazing things. And it seemed to me kind of an ideal point anyway, where each firefighter was kind of educating each other about at least the new approach and the new leadership that we were trying to, and the new culture that we were trying to cultivate.
And I know from seeing the news reports on Sunday, the fire at Universal Studios, where the firefighters on the roof with the flames, the smoke bellowing, courageous men and women in the Los Angeles City Fire Department and other fire departments that responded that. We see that in the public view, but the public doesn't see the hazing situations. And then when the lawsuits arise, it puts a dark cloud within the fire department. And I know that the financial losses have been great to the city of Los Angeles when we had to pay those settlements. So I support your commission reappointment, but just encourage to continue monitoring that to make sure that Chief Berry has the support of the commission and letting the firefighters know it's a professional organization. A lot of people want to be firefighters. In fact, Tom Labonge wanted to be a firefighter. And he was at the Universal Studios on a Sunday broadcasting like he was a firefighter. So just keep that in mind, that those lawsuits create this great financial loss to us and we want them to be professional. At the same time, enjoy what they're doing to protect the people of Los Angeles. So again, congratulations. I'm sure you'll be confirmed and continue to represent that fine agency, L.A. City Fire Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. That's our last speaker on the queue. So if we can please open the roll on the renomination, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations on your reappointment. We'll send that to the mayor right away. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item, please called special.
Item three called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Item three, Zuma Dog.
I'd like to do one minute on this if you could. So basically, this is item number three, but it regards, there's a lot of agenda items. I don't mean to single out whosoever district this is, but it's regarding improvements in maintenance. There's a lot of improvement in maintenance that's going down on the agendas and I'm afraid that there's some rackets going on here as in racketeering. I don't want the city to open itself up for a federal racketeering lawsuit because here's the problem I'm hearing, and this was brought to my attention over the weekend. The good thing about being, you know, somewhat known from being on the TV, when people see me on the streets, they stop me with information and they say that sidewalk improvements, what you do is first you build the sidewalk, then you say, oops, there's a problem, it's not good, then you break it and destroy it to rebuild it again. So you're purposefully building something only to tear it down so that you can make the money on the tearing down and rebuilding. It's called racketeering and I hope it is not a fly.
This is a lighting district? The street lighting district, if you could please address.
Yes, well, it's improvements.
Street lighting district. All right. That will, I guess, end the comments. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and open the, sorry, we're going to continue that till the 24th of June without objection. Next item called special, please.
Item 14 was being held on the desk for an amending motion and that has been circulated.
Okay. Let's go ahead then, if there's no objection, to accept that as a friendly amendment. Mr. Zine, 14.
Mr. President, I just wanted to add that this matter was discussed in the Personnel Committee and it was mentioned that we wanted this matter to go forward and not to have an impact on the managed hiring process. This amendment just clarifies that somehow it was discussed and it failed to be included in the minutes from that meeting. So this will give Westfield the opportunity to continue with their projects, amending motion, amending motion, their projects in various parts of the city of Los Angeles and we wish them well with that. But again, I want to emphasize that this was mentioned in committee and somehow the minutes did not include that. So David, thank you for being here and we're going to get this moving forward so you can get those Westfield projects underway and help the economy of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine, let's go ahead and open the roll as amended, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 21 called special for cards.
Okay. We've got on 21, I'm sorry, we'll stay here. Zuma Dog is our first speaker, then we'll hear from Donna Perman out in the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Dog on item number 21.
Oh, that's got 14 up there. Hold on.
Item 21, special events.
Oh, special event fee waivers. Yes, I've heard of them. But I'd like to say I did have a chance to see Maritonia of Iragosa Friday at Koreatown for the Bong Wong Kim press conference and I did got to say to the mayor that I noticed the special event fees have been scaled back substantially and he appreciated my comments. So I'm here to let the community know that although there are still problems like $20,000 for the BET Music Awards picked up for the city, again, special event fee waivers supposed to be for events open to the public for community benefit, free of charge. So if the event does not fall under that, it should not be waived. But I would like to say I've seen a tremendous scaling back over the past three or four meetings and we'll have Donna go through with the reports for anything that's extra shady. And let's see here, I'm just quickly going through it. So let me just give you, this will be worth a minute, to let you know the importance of why we need complete accountability on these special event fee waivers and why they need to be scaled back. First of all, we need more accountability because this is public, okay, when you give to nonprofits, you're essentially making a contribution when you pick up these special event fee waivers to quote, yes, Jack Weiss is looking, he noticed those words, those are his words. And these are nonprofits, so when you give money to nonprofits, there's no transparency or accountability and sometimes the services are not rendered that are promised. Also, when fees are absorbed and picked up by the event sponsor, we now need auditing to make sure that they are indeed being collected, that the fees that are supposed to be absorbed by the event sponsor, that they are paying for that. And also, massive property tax devaluations means massive less money for the city. All the high inflation means there'll be less spendable income and there's going to be less money in the city. You're going to have less money. So we need to cut back, start here. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Perman is our next speaker out in the San Fernando Valley. We'll come back for Matt Dowd here in council chambers.
Okay, thank you. First, my friend told me my comment on the bus was leaked out. I said the seats on the bus are too small for most people. Again, we have more fee waivers. Zuma Dog, they're back at it again. We have more fee waivers, two times today. It's also 26. Please let our starving artists like Zuma Dog earn their own money. You heard him, take care of it. Instead, you spend a lot of money on fee waivers. In the meantime, we have to have a parcel tax to pay for gangs in LA and none for the Valley. Instead, we have Third Annual Festival of Northeast, $7,000 after the fact, St. Gerard's Family Festival, $5,905, West Los Angeles Temple All-Von Festival, $2,573, two block parties, one for $4,281 and the other $2,822. I don't understand why the people on the block don't pay for it. I don't even know where these places are and I'm not going to these block parties and most people I know aren't. Most of these fee waivers are on the supplemental agenda, by the way, so it looks like it's small, but when you go to 26, there are going to be a bunch, which I'll speak out next. With our money going up for the trash fee, phone tax, property tax, this is not the right time to waive fees and with the LAUSD. Do the events that say they will pay for it, pay it back. Show us the money. Show us exactly how much, why these places are wanting this much money because I think they're wasting the money and we can't afford it with the CRA taking all our money and overdeveloping and with giving all our money to Grand Avenue Projects and Norho and Hollywood Projects, we can't afford it. So please, for once, vote against the fee waivers. But of course, I know it's, close the roll, tabulate the vote, 12 ayes. It's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker for public comment on the side of Matt Dowd.
Thank you so much. Wait, it has not been approved yet. And first of all, I want to recognize all the schoolchildren. Let me tell you what this item is about, kiddies.
Excuse me, he should be directing his comments to the council.
I'm Matt Dowd. I'm addressing the City Council about the fees that the city does not collect when it's in a budget crisis. Now, the council member, one of them is Jack Weiss, I notice here on the fee waivers, he's allowing a Buddhist temple festival for $2,500. Now, I don't have anything against the temple or the people, but all you kiddies, all your parents are getting your trash fees tripled, you're not getting police, it's not safe to walk on the street and it's because your councilmen and they're letting all these fees go through that they're not, they're not collecting the money from the people having these events. And they're wasting city money, the city's broke, your council members responsible. And these are one of the things we've talked about for two years, their special event fee waivers. Get your teacher to ask, to tell you all about them, but I'm telling the council right now that this has got to stop. Now, there's only one here that's being reimbursed because it's Billabong, but a lot of them are special interests that the city of Los Angeles doesn't have to pay for. Now, they're thousands of dollars this week. Zuma Dog actually got it wrong today. These are all bad. This is a really bad one today. After all we've done and Jack Weiss is the one responsible, so this city council needs to get the Jack Weiss memo, reread it to all the staff and everybody in the city because, kids, when you grow up, you're going to be paying millions and millions of dollars for the city from what they're taking from your parents right now.
Close public comment on this item. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item 24 called special for cards.
All right. Item 24 is next before us. Mr. Dog.
Oh, boy, there's so many things. I need more time than seven minutes a day. Boy, I would just like to comment because anytime I see the Clartz Fund, it's the Clartz Fund and we're talking about funding and transferring. Whenever there's a transfer of funds from the Clartz Fund, well, that's when my amigos across in CD14, they get real nervous and they call me up and they go, Zuma Dog, could you find out what's going on with this Clartz Fund? I like to say that there's concern that the Clartz Fund money is not being used for what it's supposed to be used for and that it magically disappears and that it's just a private, you know, I hope that the Clartz Fund is not a private slush fund for council members. I certainly hope not. Let me repeat, the Clartz Fund is not a personal slush fund for council members. I hope it's not being used as such, but I certainly get nervous when I see Clartz Fund money being transferred. Thank you. Zuma Dog at ZumaTimes.com.
Thank you, Mr. Dog. That will close our comments on item 24. Can we please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
24 is approved. Next item, I'd like to recognize Mr. Weiss before cards from the public. Mr. Weiss. And for an introduction as well.
And then I'll start on the item. Okay, so Valley Beth Shalom, guys, if you could stand up. Colleagues, I want to introduce to you third graders from Valley Beth Shalom Day School in Encino, Ms. Goldman and Ms. Winslow's class. Welcome to City Hall, guys. Wave, you're on TV, guys. Want to do your cheer?
VBS, yes.
All right. Love that. Welcome, VBS. VBS is, and Mr. Smith knows this, Mr. Zine knows this, Ms. Grule knows this, VBS is one of the leading synagogues in the San Fernando Valley. It's a great school and I'm hoping before I get out of here that I'll have the chance to help make VBS an even bigger, better place because there are plans afoot to modernize and expand VBS and I support those. And that is a good segue into item 25.
There you go.
Which is another school in the valley which wants to modernize and expand and I want to help them as well. The item that is before you today is a 245 motion of mine that comes from an action of the City Planning Commission a little over a week ago. Planning Commission action was twofold. One, they acted on the CUP. That is not this. That will come forward in the ordinary process of it's being appealed from the Planning Commission. This has to do with a rather technical matter involving the parcel map where the school and I have some questions and concerns about the exact nature of the terms and conditions imposed by the Planning Commission. I think we can get those resolved fully and well at Plum. We're going to hear public comment cards now, Mr. Garcetti. I want the folks at the community to know that it's not my preference that we have to do this separate from the CUP. I would rather have one proceeding to deal with all the Buckley issues rather than what we have now, which is a piecemeal approach. But legally, there is no option available to us to do them together. That's why we have to do this one separate. Anyway, take the public comment cards, Council President.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Zuma, not, okay, Dr. Arnold Newman.
I'd like to say in support of Councilman Weiss's motion that we are joined and I'm representing the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations, the San Fernando Valley Federation, the Sierra Club, the Ecology Center of Southern California, the International Society for Preservation of Tropical Rainforest, the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council and the Oak Forest Canyon Association in support of Councilman Weiss's motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Arnold. Thank you very much. David Goldberg is our next speaker. After that will be Barbara Dermashkin Case.
David Goldberg of Latham &amp; Watkins on behalf of the Buckley School. We appreciate the motion before the council this morning and support that motion. And as Councilman Weiss indicated, there are just a few minor clarifications and technical corrections that we are interested in making to that parcel map determination and look forward if the council exercises jurisdiction to working through those issues at Plum and continuing our ongoing discussions with the community as a part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Dermashkin Case. After that will be Vivian Gumbiner.
My name is Barbara Case and I'm a direct neighbor of the Buckley School and I am here to request that you deny the motion to invoke section 245. My husband, who is an architect, and I built our home across from the school 16 years ago. We were required to put in $30,000 worth of curbs and gutters on the street and we believe that if it goes to this, if this is allowed, that because Councilman Jack Weiss is so much for the school, that Buckley will not be required to put these curbs and gutters, which we, and it is the normal process of the city to require improvements when a project is being built. And I strongly believe that the Buckley School should be held to the same standards. They're just curbs and gutters. This should not be considered a hardship for the applicant as it is a basic practice in the city and the school should not be exempt. Comino del Cambre has a history of problems and if the street collapses adjacent to the school, the school will not have a viable emergency exit. This would endanger students as well as the neighbors. The school currently has sandbags lining the curbs and they are well aware of the dangers of the street. By granting this motion, it will set up an opportunity for the Buckley School to leave the street as it is and not have to make the necessary improvements adjacent to the Anyway, they should care about the safety of their students also. I have photographs here that I would like to pass around and one area that we need to fix is falling down and is directly above the school and some of the parents of the school have expressed concern that cars will fall down from that area if the school breaks. I have a master's of education from the UC system. I am not against education.
Thank you.
And Jane Usher of City Planning said that no other school has ever presented so many, asked for so much before. I feel that I want something fair and thank you very much and I would like to show.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll make sure, if you give the photographs to our Sergeant at Arms there, we'll make sure those get circulated.
So I have photographs of the curbs. We not only did curbs and gutters, but paved the whole street, which they're not being required to do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments today. Vivian Gumbiner?
My written.
Gumbiner.
Hello. My name is Vivian Gumbiner and I'm here today on behalf of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, which is comprised of thousands of homeowners in the Sherman Oaks area. I'm here to request that you deny the motion to invoke section 245. Our homeowners group is not against the school's expansion, but we would like to be workable for the school as well as for the neighbors. The project will have about 65,000 square feet of new construction, 50,000 square feet of buildings that are being modernized and tens of thousands of square feet for existing buildings. This is not a small construction job. Our councilman has expressed concerns about the cost of the BOE's recommendations to this project, and is worried about placing a hardship on the Buckley School. Therefore, he wants to place a very low spending cap on the BOE's requirements. Mind you that many of the BOE's most expensive requirements have already been eliminated from the project. I believe that safety is an overriding factor and cannot be compromised. The city has asked for curbs and gutters on Camino del Cumbre. The neighbors contend that the street should be repaved. For 40 years, the school has used Camino del Cumbre for trucks, buses, and school buses and cars. The condition of the street is so bad that there are sandbags in a good portion of it. I mentioned safety earlier. A large portion of the street just south of the school failed about three years ago and collapsed. FEMA funds had to be used to repair the street because the damage is so extensive. If a collapse of this nature were to happen adjacent to the school, the results would be deadly. Does the city really want to open itself up to the kinds of lawsuits that would follow such a disaster? I think not. Frankly, I'm shocked that the school is willing to take such risks with the safety of its students. Requiring the school to provide the BOE recommendations is not a hardship. The school's expansion project is a $70 million project. If they were to spend just 1% of their budget on the BOE's recommendations, the department would be a lot safer. By the way, when I built my home 15 years ago, I had to put on curbs and gutters, there was no cap on my expenses, and it was more than 1% of my construction cost. Let's face it, the city budget is tight, so why would the city council vote to make it easier for the developer of a large project to be exempt from the basic requirements, ask the average citizen in a project in the city of Los Angeles? All the neighbors are asking is that you ensure that the school be required to be a responsible citizen.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments, we appreciate our closed public comment. Mr. Weiss, do you want to say anything in conclusion?
No, thank you.
All right. Have a recommendation before us? Mr. Labonge?
Curb and gutter, that the, could you explain that, just that we are, we're leaving it, I just want to know, she made a legitimate...
The issue is, um, it's not whether improvements will be required, but it has to do with precisely what the improvements are and precisely how much they cost, the extent of them. It's a, it's one of these sort of semi-rural, it's a hill, it's not quite a substandard street. Folks who live up there have a different view about what should happen up there than BOE in some circumstances, so there are a lot of moving parts, and we're going to hash it out at Plum.
Just to tell you, she said she was required, when she did improvements of her property, to do a curb, and it was over 1%, and I don't know if there was any, I don't know if there's any explanation. I know your fine deputies will work with her closely to try to resolve that issue there, but I think there's an important point, if the neighbor adjacent to her, she lives within the proximity of the requirement, why are we not requirement of a curb and gutter? Is there no curb and gutter up there?
Well, it's a, it's a long story, Mr. Labonge. Part of the reason for the expansion, part of the reason for the expansion that's being done is actually to take school traffic off of that street, so that street is less impacted in the future by the school. There will be, uh, modernization of the street required, the school has agreed to do that. It's a matter of just drilling down into the details and the actual cost, uh, that's all we're doing here.
And you can work with the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, so Mr. Weiss will work with you there. Thank you.
Okay. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll on this item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 26 called special for cards.
Okay, item 26 is next before us. We'll call first, um, Zuma Dog forward. 26. Would you like to speak, sir? Okay. Donna Perriman is our next speaker out in Van Nuys, item 26.
Okay, uh, thank you. This is, we have, most of our fee waivers are Free Shakespeare in the Park for $19,358, Studio City Farmer's Market, $78,478, though I realize this several days, that's a lot of money. Second Annual, uh, Lemart Village Book Fair, $8,304. I love books, but can't you find it funded another way? Third Annual Fiat Summer Street Scene, $2,267. What is Councilman Greg Smith's Movie Under the Stars for $984? Is it a movie about stars or Councilman Smith? We have Bishop Hamel Hartford Booking Square for $2,000. Huesta Futuro Day Service, what is that, for $1,642? And Fourth of July at Hanson Dam for $5,244. Charge them a small amount, no fee waiver needed. We are being taxed of our home, with the price of gas going up, our food going up, more of our people have serious financial problems, so does our city. Most people have to take care of their own problems, so it's tough luck for them, which I'm included. So our city should have to pay for its own expenses. It's not right to continue waiving fees. We have 17 fee waivers between the two, not counting five events that supposedly pay back. I ask again, why pay upfront just to pay back? Any interest in here, do we get interest on that? How long do they have to pay it back? A year, two years, six months? If this is paring down, I say let somebody oversee the fee waivers, because apparently you don't know how to cut down, you don't know which events should be done, so let's get somebody that really knows how to do that and decide for you what should be waived. Thank you, and anyway, close the roll, tabulate the vote, 12 eyes. Thank you.
Not yet, we have one more speaker, Matt Dowd.
Of course, thank you, and I want to make a quick introduction. My beautiful wife's here today, she came in with me, could you stand up, please, baby? She's right here. So everyone probably wants to see who's crazy enough to marry Matt Dowd, but there's always one. Anyway, let me tell you how these fee waivers now relate directly to Venice Beach. Directly. The city's in a budget crunch, there's people in the valley complaining about the fee waivers and how we don't have the money. But here's the city throwing money away on a litigation where a federal judge has already said this case is over, it's settled, you put the new ordinance in...
Sir, if you could comment on the special events themselves.
Yeah, this is directly related, here's the money for the fee waivers.
Many things are related, but if you could comment on the special events that are here before us, please. Thank you.
Look, okay, thank you, Tom Labonge, am I allowed to thank him for cutting Jack Weiss down? Because anytime someone cuts Jack Weiss down, it's a great day for me.
Sir, if you could talk about the special events motion, please.
No, Jack Weiss is behind the memo to cut the fee waivers.
That's the second warning, if you could make it directly about the fee waivers, thank you.
It's directly, okay, let's find a Jack Weiss one in here, shall we? Oh, wait, I think you slid those through on those other ones, on the other items. See, there's so many fee waivers now in the city of Los Angeles. Oh my God, the mayor is lying to Zuma Dog on video, because Zuma Dog says, thanks for cutting the fee waivers. You know, I'm going to thank you, because I see they're getting cut, and as soon as he says that, they're like, oh, let's throw another 30 or 40 through. So, Jack Weiss, 2001, there's a memo that we're going to look into these, but now they're, he's the one, he's putting them through with Bill Rosendahl and West Hollywood like they're going out of fashion. Just watch for the gay marriage fee waivers to start coming up.
That'll close our comments on that item. Please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 27 called special for cards.
Uh, we had that card removed, so if we can go ahead and prepare the roll on that and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
27 is approved. Next item, please.
Item 31 called special for cards.
Okay, Zuma Dog, item 31. You have one minute left.
Yes, yes, I'd like to say that this is about track maps, and when you talk about track maps, by the way, I do support Father Mario Torres staying at Sacred Heart Church and Cardinal Mahoney not moving him elsewhere. But regarding track maps, and I hope Ed Reyes will support that in, in my movement toward that. Now regarding track maps, track maps, no, I blew one past you. Track maps are the first thing toward density. When we talk about density, the mayor calls it smart growth, Zuma Dog calls it dumb growth, and it all starts right here every day with track maps. And, uh, the problem with track maps, first of all, Quimby fees, I want to make sure the Quimby fees not only stay in the district, but in the area as well, because we've had complaints at neighborhood council meetings that the Quimby money for the district is all funneling toward one area, and they don't want that. Now, the other thing, what's the problem with too much density? Ask the Universal Firefighter, the people at the Universal Studios, they didn't have enough water pressure to fight the fires, that's because there's too much density and we don't have enough water. No more of these.
All right. We'll close our public comment on item 31. If you can please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved as well. Uh, next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting or referral?
Those are posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
All right, any excuses? Nope?
No excuses today.
Okay. Any, uh, announcements of a business nature?
Business nature, the County of Los Angeles will be, uh, doing a full assessment of the, uh, very, uh, unfortunate fire at Universal City. Los Angeles City firefighters and county and other agencies worked diligently to put out a very stubborn blaze. Within two weeks, they're going to report back to the Board of Supervisors, and we will monitor that. Our Los Angeles Department of Water and Power is working with them in this effort here, and we will monitor too as well.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Anybody have any adjourning motions today? Do, if I can ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions.
Oh my God.
All right, Ms. Han?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Karen Low Jordan, who passed away on May 17th. She was only 58 years old. Karen taught at Gulf Avenue Elementary School in Wilmington for more than a decade, and at Gulf, Karen was instrumental in the establishment of the school's computer lab, an entire classroom devoted to computer-based education. Karen also taught at Leland Street Elementary School. She became an unofficial mentor to a new generation of teachers, setting an example with her classroom management skills, her outstanding classroom scores in reading and math, and her curriculum innovations. When the LAUSD and the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce began a program in 2000 to recognize